Welcome, welcome, welcome 239. That's Sensing Southwest Florida and beyond. And you don't know me. My name is Tim Juret, if you don't know me, which I'm sure a lot of people out there haven't. We got a great guest, a good friend of mine, Dan Kowal. He's, he is actually a candidate. You're official now, right, Dan?
Yes, sir.
Official candidate for District Four, Collier County Commissioner.
Yes, sir.
That's, that's pretty cool.
Came official back in midway through September or towards the end of September, we filed our paperwork. And midway through October, we had everything up and running. So.
That's awesome. So now you got to the studio. Did you find the studio okay? What do you, what do you think about this place? Is it kind of cool?
Oh, it's cool. Zach, man. It's ultimate. I come rolling around the corner like you said, I'm over by the gym. When I come around, I see your 239 in the window and yeah, I like it.
It's pretty fun. I didn't even show you the whole thing. We got some like window effects. We got some cool things because we're doing a podcast. We're having a little bit different. But I told you, I welcomed you anytime you want to come on, do live streams, whatever you want to do. I'm a supporter of Dan. That's, that's a good thing, right?
That's a great thing.
Yeah, no. And Dan and I have known each other for a long time, and I think Dan's going to do a great job. Dan, prior law enforcement, 18 years with the sheriff's office. And I know you have some stuff, federal stuff as well and US Army.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I am pretty much right out of high school. And I grew up in Western Pennsylvania and graduated high school. And that summer I entered delayed entry program and entered the United States Army. And I didn't really look back, you know, went in the army. I think I was looking for structure. I think at that age, you know, a lot of young men, you know, you, you need a little structure in your life, you know? And that definitely gave me, gave me that, uh, the spree of the core, the, you know, mission oriented lifestyle that I was looking for. And I think it really resonated with me and it stuck with me the rest of my life because pretty much, I mean, 30 some years of public service. If you count my military and everything else, I mean, it's just been nonstop up until I retired this last September.
Yeah. And I agree with you because I'd probably be back in my hometown right now. If I didn't leave, I went in the air force. I'm a veteran. Tomorrow's Veterans Day. Yay. Give a little round of applause for that. We're very, we're very proud of our, our veterans, right? We're, we're so fortunate enough, you know? When I, when I went in the military and probably similar to you and your kid, you don't realize the impact you have on, has on you. And then also I think you feel pretty proud about what you've been able to do for your country by being a veteran. Is that correct?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And you, you reflect on it more now later as you become an older, an older man and a, you know, you, because when you do it as a young age, you're doing it as, you know, something you like or something you love. And you don't realize the impact it really carries with that. And you don't even realize, you know, the fact like yourself and many other veterans, you know, you, you stepped up and you basically signed a blank check, you know, to the government saying, if they cash it, it's bad news because you're coming home in a box.
Yeah.
And thank God, you know, I was one of the fortunate ones, you know, that, you know, I got through my, my army career and my milit, my law enforcement career and didn't end up in that situation. But, uh, you know, there's a lot out there that we have to remember and respect. But, you know, didn't make it back, our brothers and sisters. And, uh, it's so important. We never forget about them.
Yeah. And I think you, you brought up a good point that when you go in the military, it gives you a really solid foundation at a young age. Cause I mean, I was doing things at 19 years old. I mean, I was, I was working nuclear weapons. I mean, we were taking nukes out to the flight line. Like we'd load them out and we were kind of laughing, having fun. We didn't even realize what the hell we were doing. How serious? Cause I was in the Cold War, 1986. We'd take nukes to the flight line for F-16s to be loaded up. And you know, at the time, you're just like, hey, that's my job. But you don't realize like you're 19 years old. I mean, and, and the things they give you at that age, the responsibilities grow you as a person. And I think throughout my whole career, and I've spent 31 in law enforcement myself, we've been side by side. Those tools are invaluable. It's just amazing.
Yeah, no, most definitely. I mean, it, and like you said, you, you get that mission oriented, uh, you know, attitude about yourself. And you're doing what is right, you know, that's important. You're always doing what's right and towards the mission to make sure everything's accomplished. Cause everything has its own play, part in, in everything we do, you know, and I also, I entered in the summer 80, into summer 84. I mean, I was, you know, I went in the Cold War era too, under a great leader, Ronald Reagan. So, but you know, the same thing, we were, we were training to, uh, you know, go into countries like South America and things like that. People didn't realize, you know, there was a lot of, uh, third world countries that are being led by socialists and communists that were being influenced by the Russians. And the other socialist and communist countries out there that, uh, you know, there's a lot of behind the scenes things that were going on that, you know, that had to be done to keep, uh, people free. They had to have their freedoms.
Yeah, no doubt. So you running, and I know the background that you have, you running for county commission. How does your past, such as military, US Army, um, your prior law enforcement? How do you think that's going to impact or help you in your position as Collier County Commissioner, District Four?
Well, you gotta remember every, every level of government, if you look at government, and even if you took out your phone and Googled primary mission of the government, a government and the government is to protect your rights, you know? And, and that's so important that we have people that have a lifetime of character and a lifetime of integrity in protecting people's rights. You know, sometimes you might not agree with everything that's going on, but we also have to make sure that people are protected, you know, by those two documents that our forefathers left us, you know, the, you know, the constitution and our independence, you know? And the very first one and the second and the third are all just as important as the other one. And character is what's important, you know? You develop that through your story, your story of life is what makes you who you are, you know? So, and that's, I feel that that is definitely in my life, I've learned those lessons that you have to put those certain little things ahead of everything else. When you make important decisions. And if they aren't in a line of protecting people's rights, then it's probably not the right decision to make.
Yeah. And I think you, you hit it on the head where not everybody's going to agree with your decisions, especially, you know, at a county commission level. You know, you're, you're making decisions on whether a community should grow there or, you know, we should have a grocery store or, you know, should we wear masks? Those type of things. But, but I think the core values and thoughts and constitution, it's important that we follow those, those because do you feel right now, we're starting to lean the wrong direction in some cases? And you probably wouldn't be running if you didn't, if you didn't think that.
Yeah, that's, is definitely the, the reason I am running. I mean, that's the, the main driver is because I've seen it pretty much every level of our government. We've been getting infiltrated by people that aren't true to, uh, what, what they should be doing for the people. I mean, our government works for the people. It don't work for an individual. It surely doesn't work for a politician, right? You know, it's, it's, you have to be the guardian of them when you're up there because they're putting you there to do a job. You know, this is, this is my, uh, job interview, you know, for this position. And, you know, like you said, these decisions have to be made, you know, but we also have to look at it. And you can't make, this is the thing, I, I come across this a lot and I get a lot, ask these questions a lot, especially about growth. Growth is something, you know, that it's so important right now in Collier County, you know, it's a big question about, you know, how we manage this growth, you know? A lot of people don't realize, you know, we only occupied 20% as residential property of this whole county. 80% of this county is nothing but swamp, protected land and, you know, national parks. And yeah, it is a very small amount that we really have set aside for, uh, you know, our communities and our residential properties. So, you know.
Drive to Fort Lauderdale one time. You, you go to Fort Lauderdale, you go across the alligator alley and you're like, we're still in Collier County. And we're like, we've already driven like almost an hour.
52 mile marker all the way up to the 115.
Yeah, you know it well.
I had to do it on a Harley Davidson about 110 mile an hour once.
Yeah.
Yeah. Ain't no funny bugs the whole way.
Back in the, back in your work, work days. I have to do that thing in the middle of the night. And I think, I think knowing the county as well as you do, okay, because you've worked in law enforcement for 18 years in Collier County. I mean, you know, the nooks and crannies, even though you're in a particular district, I think it's important. You know, Amokalee, you know, East Naples, you know, Bay Shore, you know, North Naples, you know, Golden Gate. You gotta at least know these places. I mean, realistically, I, I could probably bet you right now, there's people on the commission that do not know particular areas in Collier County.
I can guarantee it.
You know, but I think that that's important to know those. And I think that's a huge benefit.
No, it is. And it is. And I mean, you got, it's like one extreme to the other. I mean, my district, District Four, listen, it's, it's, it's grown out. You know, it's, it's, it's pretty much at its limit, but this is also a census year. So we're going to be changing the boundaries of District Four here. I think commissioners have to vote on it this December. So there's going to be some changes. District Four is going to grow a little bit, you know, and it's going to grow into the county. It has nowhere else to go but into the county some more because it includes, you know, of course, Port Royal, the city, the coastline, all the way up to Pine Ridge. The whole southern border of Pine Ridge Road out the I-75. But it's, it's, there's no way about it. I mean, it was the least growth area in the last 10 years. It only had 2,600 people move in.
Wow. Yeah.
Where, where we had places like District Five, east of, uh, Collier, where you had 20,000 people.
Right.
You know, that's a big difference, you know, and, and it is, it's something we have to, we have to face. But as a constitutional conservative, who I believe I am, and I think any Republican that calls herself a Republican should think the same way. But, you know, we all come here from somewhere, you know?
Pretty much.
Pretty much. There's not, there's not a ton of native Floridian, I mean, native Collier, let's say. There's people from different parts of Florida that migrated here because they were trying to get away from the rest of the craziness in this state.
Right.
But we've all come from somewhere. And who am I to deny somebody that right to live in one of those? We created this, this paradise. I know. And now we're going to suffer because by creating it. And people want to come here, man. You don't, you're not going to stop them. If they have the means and the ability to come here and live in paradise, we have to be able to manage that properly and, and make sure we remain and keep what we are, you know? So we can keep it this way.
Yeah, we can't put a bubble over this beautiful place because people are coming. And like I said, and we discussed it prior. People want to be in Collier County. People fight over a Collier County license plate. I want to have, uh, you know, a Lee County license plate or I want to have a Collier. And people fight over it. And, and that's a good thing. I'm proud of my county. I mean, there's no better county in the United States.
You should be, man. You sacrificed 30 years of your life to this county.
I love it. I love this county.
Long nights, long days, you know, not in the best conditions.
Yeah.
You know, we know what it's like, you know, I, I think I worked five, well, how many hurricanes now? I don't know, national disasters. And we're the only ones left behind, man. Everyone else fell out and went north somewhere. And, and we stay here behind and make sure we get it up and running and beautiful again. So when they come back in a week.
Yeah. It's just amazing. Where you at? We're Georgia. We're, we're in Georgia. Okay, great. We're here. We're hunkered down. We're having, we're having fun with it though. So that, that brings me to another thing. You're running on a platform that you're going to be a full-time commissioner, which I think is important. I mean, we discussed a little bit, what does that mean? Full-time commissioner?
It's important because it's a full-time job. I mean, Collier County, you've got a $2 billion budget. This ain't no joke.
With a B.
Our budget, yeah, with a B. Our budget and our, our land mass is probably larger than the state of Rhode Island. So this is a very important job. This, you better be full-time. It takes full-time attention.
Yeah. 2,025, 2,02500 square feet or square miles.
Square miles.
Square miles. That's a lot.
I think we're almost as big as Delaware. Come think of it. So, yeah, it's, it is. It's a full-time job. And that, you know, I've never, I've never shied away from hard work. And I, you know, I've, I've always put the hours in. I've, you know, for me, 12, 14 hour days, nothing, you know, that's typical, you know, that was, that's a normal day. I retired and I made a commitment to myself, my family, and definitely to people of Collier County that I am going to be a full-time commissioner. I'm a full-time candidate right now.
Love it. That's good. That's good. And I appreciate it. And you know, go back to, you know, to step up and put yourself out there as a candidate for any political office, what does that take? I mean, that takes a lot because it exposes you, you know? And I'm saying not in a bad way, for the goods and the bads. How does, how did that impact your decision?
Well, I, my decision was made when I sat around and I, I kind of looked at, and I says, you know what? I'm not going to be one of them people sitting on the couch complaining about everything.
Amen.
You know, I'm not going to complain and not do something about it. And that's who I am. I'm not going to, you know, I, I've come up to people and they'll, they'll complain about the government, complain about what's going on. And I'll ask them, they haven't even voted in 10 years.
Right.
You have no right to complain, you know? If you're not going to do, that's your voice, man, your vote. That's what makes America, that's why it's our government, not theirs, the people's government, because you're supposed to be able to vet the people you put in office. And you put them in there because that's who you believe in, or they believe in what you believe in. So, yeah, I mean, I wasn't going to sit on the couch anymore. I was like, you know what? I did my time, military, law enforcement, you know, I still got gas in the tank. And I'm going to take this to a different level. I think I can still be, you know, helpful to every aspect of the people living in Collier County. You know, as best as I can and ability, you know, full-time, like I said before.
That's good. Now, what are some of the changes that you'd like to see within the county commission and how it operates? I guess, and I'm not talking about how the, the daily function of it, but what are some changes you'd like to see? The way, you know, the commission communicates, works with the community. How are you going to make those changes? Or what type of changes are you thinking about doing?
Well, I'm definitely going to be out there FaceTime, you know, I'm going to be in the communities. I'm going to be out there talking to the people face to face, you know, I'm going to find out what their problem or what their, their, their complaints are. I mean, think about it, like in law enforcement, you know, every day you go to, you respond to a call if somebody has a problem. You know, you're a problem solver, you know, you, you're given a problem, you, you, and in law enforcement, sometimes you have to do a split second decision on a, on a very serious problem. But, uh, I think it's the same thing. I think everybody out there has, you know, there are certain issues that need to be addressed or, you know? And some are very, very, very important or very vital, you know, but it doesn't mean that every one of them are too, you know? But you still have to have people with the opportunity to vet to you, tell you their issues. And then, you know, we weigh through them and find the important ones to line up with the people and we stand behind them. You know, it's, it's very important to have that FaceTime out there. I'm not going to call out any names, but you know, I, I go into a mission, I research what I'm doing. So I've went on a few different commissioners' websites and I saw one that the last post they had was from 2019.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's ridiculous. People need to know what's going on.
Come on. I mean, and if you, if you really are working for the people in your district and, you know, that's, that's unacceptable, you know?
So communicating and I think being a good listener, right? So you, like, based on what you're, sounds like you're saying, you're going to bring people to the table or you're going to go to their table, right?
Yeah, I'm going to drop it down.
Go to their table and say, hey, what do we got going on? And it's, it's a time consuming thing, but I think the only real way, and we, we talk about it all through our careers, you know, leading from the front, right? Being on the front line. And I think that's important, you know, I, I commend you for, you know, making that happen or that's your plan.
No, the most part, the most important thing in communication is the listening part. You gotta receive what, what, what the conversation is, you know? And then some people will stand there and talk to you, but they're not really listening.
Yeah.
You know, so.
So no, that's, that's, that's definitely, uh, real important. And one of the big things that faces in Collier County is because it's such a nice place. Everybody wants to be here. Supply, demand, real estate, that type of thing. Prices are shooting through the roof, right? So just a, a normal home is, you know, minimal is, you know, 350, 450, decent community, which I think all of Collier County is, is really, it's really good. How are we going to address, you know, our public safety personnel, our hospital workers, our school teachers? How are we going to address the fact of, you know, letting them be able to live in our own community? How's that going to, how can we do that?
Yeah, that's so important because, you know, when you're vested in a community and the, the first thing, a young person in a career, you know, like law enforcement or nursing or even teaching, to be vested in a community, you want part of it, you know? And homeownership is a lot of that. Once, once they get to that point where they can afford to buy a home and they can live here and they have their roots here.
Stakeholder.
They, they're a stakeholder. Exactly. Now they, now they have more incentive to stay here. Cause you know, as well as I know, you know, these past 10 years, even with the sheriff's department, we see guys come in three, four years into the job. We get them trained up. We spend a lot of money on them. And then boom, where are they at? Oh, they just took a job with the feds. So they're up there, you know, they're in Georgia now. They're here or there. So they take advantage of, you know, our great organization at the sheriff's department, they take advantage of the great training in that. But they have an investment to this community because they can't afford to live here sometimes, you know? And that's important, you know, if we can't have the public safety that we're used to and we're accustomed to, it, it could go south real quick. And that's so important that we have these people. All right. For instance, this is just something I, I, at one time I was on the pay-per-view committee with the sheriff's department. And I did a quick study and I found out that, you know, the problem with the sheriff's department was, and, and the payback then was that we were competing with money that came from New York, Boston, Chicago. Those people were coming with the money they made in those cities where, you know, 700,000, $800,000 for a one-room flat in, in Manhattan and a thousand dollars a month to park your car. And they saw.
Taxes.
And they saw a $600,000 house. They're like, oh my God, that's a deal. Well, for a teacher and a police officer, that's not a deal. That's, that's living from paycheck to paycheck. And, you know, we have to, and I know people say, oh, you, when you hear the word affordable housing, especially certain groups of people, they automatically think, because they come from those, you know, those blue cities up there where affordable housing to them was government subsidized housing and, and things of that high rises and shoving in as many people as you can into one building. And that's not what it is here. You know, I know firsthand, like my wife, who's in the mortgage business. And she's done deals for, you know, just your average, like, you know, people working restaurants and stuff where they found homes that are nice gated communities here in Collier County for $4, $500,000 where the two, the husband and wife work, and it can comfortably get into those kinds of homes. Those aren't government housing. Those aren't subsidized housing, but they're affordable. That is affordable and they're beautiful. Because our code enforcement does a decent job, believe it or not, even though they get on me sometimes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But they do hold a certain standard to our communities and, and it shows, you know? So that's not, let's, everybody gets spun up around the axle about this affordable housing and they, they look at it a totally different, you know? And what it's not really what we're talking about here. So we have to have that to maintain the lifestyle we, we love and enjoy here. Cause once we lose our first responders, we're, we're behind the eight ball. We're playing catch-up. We're going to see things diminish, you know, and it's just, just the way things are. This is a long order country.
Yeah. And I, and I think when you say affordable 350, 450, we know that's a lot of money. Everybody out there is going, hey, affordable to who? It's going to be tough sledding the first, you know, to, to, you know, to catch up. But I think, I think the sheriff, I think the school board's looking at ways to try to, you know, increase salaries, give incentives, that type of thing. Governor just put out a $5,000 stipend, which is not going to make a huge difference if you're buying a house, but it'll help. There's some things that I think we can do to assist to get people, you know, maybe some tax breaks, that type of thing for people in public safety. And ser, and the service industry. I mean, think about it, live, live in here, you know, making $10 an hour, $15 an hour, trying to find a place. I've got people right now, myself being in real estate, uh, after I retired in April, people, I'm looking for an apartment to rent. Anything, you know, under 1,500. I mean, 1,500, that's a lot of money, but there's really not a lot out there. So I think it's going to be a constant battle that we're always going to be facing. But I think if we're aware of it and we try to do some things to, to, to make some changes, I think that would be good.
Yep, most definitely. I mean, and a lot of people don't realize, you know, our, our sheriff's department, our fire departments, our EMS, they, this is such a unique area. We go, you know, our census says whatever, 350,000 residents of Collier County. So we base, we, everything's a formula, especially when it comes to law enforcement, you know, per every 1,000, you have one deputy, you know, per capita and things of that nature. The problem is they don't take consideration. In, in November, our population grows by one-third or maybe more.
Over 500,000.
We're not hiring that many more law enforcement just for those six months.
Right.
We have the same amount of people trying to do the job. Now their population grows. Now the population changes every year. And these guys are held and women are held to task to do the same quality of work that they were held to do at the normal number that they're hired, you know, we hire manpower for. And that's, that's, that's a game changer. And there's not too many unique places like that in this country. But we're one of them and we don't take that consideration. We need to make sure we have the right amount of people, the right amount of trained people and ready at, at any moment to take care of these things. We can't never be understaffed in these positions.
And I think to break it down even a little further, think about a restaurant, right? So you have Monday night, Tuesday night, Wednesday night, Thursday night, you have a staff, but we all know on Friday and Saturday night, you're going to have to beef it up a little bit because you've got more people Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Well, basically in a situation like fire, sheriff's office, things like that, it stays the same. Because you've got to have, you've got to have basic calls for service covered. And then when those busy nights come, you're really kind of just trying to scramble to get there. So I think, I think we've done a really good job at it, but I think we're at it, almost at a tipping point. I, I think you might agree with that. And having, and having you on the commission, you, you'll understand that when the sheriff, you know, is trying to hire people and what do we need to do or, you know, fire or even the schools, we're in the same situation as schools, teachers, recruit, bus drivers. You know, it's just, it's just that those things all filter down to those, those type of things.
Most definitely. Yeah. And it's, it's so important, you know, that these things are met and, and we can maintain.
Yeah. Very good. What, what is, um, what is Collier County? What's, what about the future growth? What is, I get excited when I hear about it. Some people don't, but you know, it's going to grow, right? Cause I, I've been here for close to 32 years. What is Collier kind of going to look like 20 years from now?
Well, I, you know, I'm, I'm a big free market guy, you know, I, I believe that the market adjusts itself. And, you know, if, if the people have the ability to move here and the contractors and the developers have the ability to do things right, we can, we could work together and make this happen. Now I, we talked earlier, I, I was a federal agent in Washington DC. And when I moved to Washington DC, I initially rented an apartment. So I want to get the lay of the land, right? So before I invested in anything. So I figured out that in Washington DC, you could be at the US Capitol building and you could say, all right, say you live in Georgetown, which is within the city. You drive nine o'clock in the morning to go to work at the Capitol. It's an hour and a half drive. It's 12 miles away. It's an hour and a half drive.
Yeah.
So my wisdom and my kind of thinking outside the box, I put myself near the interstate systems. I actually bought a house in Annapolis, Maryland, which was like 45 miles outside the city, 50 miles outside the city. But I was, had quick access to Interstate 50. And I could get to work in the morning on the interstate, just as fast as somebody that lived within the city, just by using the interstates. And I, I don't think we utilize our I-75. We have, like you mentioned earlier, we have from mile marker 52, all the way to mile marker 115, it runs through Collier County, a six-lane super highway. And we don't, I don't think we utilize it enough. And if we do get to the point where especially out in District Five, there's a whole city possibly going to go in east of DeSoto Boulevard.
They're working on it. I saw them. They're out there building houses right now.
I know. And, and the, and the commission and everybody in this county, their answer is a, we'll extend Vanderbilt Beach Road, we'll extend. They want to extend these eastern, east-west brown roads. The problem is they're extending them through communities. And, and, you know, residential and commercial property, all that does is create more stop signs and red lights on those roads as you travel east. I think going south is the way to go. That's the answer. Come out of that community, and a lot of people don't notice, there's a secret test track out there. Ford and Harley Davidson. So it's not like it's all pristine woods or anything that, this, you know, and all this great nature and wildlife live out there. That's already developed out there. A lot of people don't realize that there's a lot out there that's in them woods already. If we ran south out of them new communities and put a mile, you know, exits 92 on the interstate. And these people just start using the interstate, Everglades Boulevard. I know people sitting in traffic on Golden Gate Boulevard every day that just sit there and stew and stew and just get angry and angry because they're in stop traffic on that road, trying to go east and west. If we had an exit on Everglades Boulevard, I-75, which is right there, we already go underneath it. That would alleviate so many people east of, um, I say Wilson and Everglades and DeSoto. Hop on the interstate, three exits up the road, man, you pop back off, now you're in Naples. You're a mile away from downtown that quick. So we don't utilize it. We definitely don't. Yeah. And then, and the other thing is too, you know, a lot of people are fine, I'm a kind of history guy, right? Our founders, when they developed this country, when they formed this country, and it specifically, they didn't want it formed. And they didn't want us to make rules or, or make decisions through passion. And a lot of these people sitting in traffic, their passion overtakes their reality.
Right.
You know, and that's, that's what, that's what they get ingrained in them is that anger during that passionate time. Who's ever made a good decision while you were angry? Think about it. They tell you not to.
No, wait.
Our gov, our government was designed to, to work off of reason. We were designed to work by reason. That's what our forefathers wanted. They never wanted you to make rules or regulations through passion. They wanted it to reason. And it's worked so far, 248 years or so, right?
Yeah.
So we got to keep going, thinking that way.
Yeah. Oh, that's good. Now, one, one thing before we go, um, I noticed your logo. You got a really cool logo. I like it. I don't know if we can bring it up. Yeah. So we got good looking Dan on the right over here. He's ready. Get the, the city of Naples behind him and we have your logo, right?
My John Travolta.
Yeah, your John Travolta. Looking good, looking good, Dan.
Somebody said that online. I said, you look like John Travolta. I'm like, oh, if that's good or bad.
So you got the, you got the logo up there. Give us a little, I mean, because I asked about the logo. I said, hey, it's a really cool logo. Give us a little rundown on how you came to that.
Yeah. If you know me, I'm, I'm very passionate about this country and I'm very passionate about the direction we're going. And some people look at it and automatically think, oh, it's like the Marine Corps, Yojima, you know, but that's definitely not it. And some people look at it and automatically think, oh, it's like the Marine Corps, Yojima, you know, but that's definitely not it. If you ever look at their, the photos of that, the flags the other way. And it's a single person. And that, that's basically me and, and the people I want to govern for. And the flag is leaning to the left. And I've seen our country over the past 30 years lean to the left. And what I'm trying to do is write the flag. We're pushing it right. So wherever you see that logo, it's always going to look in that way. It's not going to be facing the other way. It's going to be the flag leaning to the left and us, the people pushing it to the right. So we definitely need to write this country. We've been going in the wrong direction for the past 30 years.
Yeah, get it going. But no, I, I, I commend you for running. It's, it's not an easy commitment to do and it takes a lot of, a lot of, you know.
For the young ones?
Yeah. Just a lot, a lot of, um, passion. It takes a lot of heart just to, just to step up there. Because like you said, everybody wants to, you know, complain, right?
Yeah.
So let's get, you know, I was reading online, this lady was, was talking the other day about, you know, my community is so out of control. I don't know what to do about it. I just wrote back, are you on the board? Jump on the board, make something happen, a little different level than the county, but it's, you know, same, same principle, right? So we, we just need to make sure that, um, you know, we, we have passionate people in there. And I think by having you there, I think is, is, is a good thing. And I'm not, I'm not saying anything negative about the current, but I think change is good. And I think your background is definitely going to make a big difference. I really do.
Well, I appreciate that. And I appreciate it a lot, you know? And if people want to know or, or know a lot about me, they can go on my website. It's, uh, W-W-W-VoteForDanCoWall. That the four is spelled out.
Number four?
No, it's spelled out. F-O-R.
Okay.
DanCoWall.com. And, uh, you know, you can go on my website. You know, this, I'm not a politician by no means, but I am running for a political office. So by nature, I'm applying for a political job. So if the definition, I'm a politician now, then I guess I am. But other than that, I'm, I'm a true American that believes in, uh, doing the right thing. And we have to remember every position, even our school boards, we have to make sure we get the right people in there. You know, we have to move forward and even every level of our, our government, we have to make sure we have the right people in there. And once, once we have people in there and when they are who they are, they're who, who they really say they are, and they prove that, then that's how we change things higher up. Because as we can move these people through the system, we start replacing the people that aren't who they are, the ones that have become dirty politicians and things in, in the swamp up in Washington DC, which I got to see behind the scenes when working there. But, um, that's how we do it. It starts from the ground level and work your way up. Nobody starts at the top.
Yeah.
You know, and if it's worth, worth having, you, it's worth starting at the bottom and, and, and working your way up. Because we need to make sure we have the right people in every position, even the local government, all the way through state, all the way to federal. And I think, I think we got a good one right now in District 19 and Byron, Byron Donaldson. He's, I've been watching him. He's been doing a really good job. He's standing, you know, holding the line for us. But I look forward to meeting everybody out there, man. I got a, got a kickoff party this Friday at Venture X.
Cool place.
Yeah, it starts at six o'clock. If people still want to stop by, you can go, like I said, on my website. And I think it's on the cover page. You just pan to the bottom. And then if you want to go, you just click the button and, uh, go ahead and take a response. And if you want to show up, there'll be, uh, free food, maybe free cocktails.
I'm there, Dan. I'm there, Dan.
Some music, music by Matt Jolly. He'll be there.
Matt's great. Yeah, that's great. Yeah.
And then I'll, I'll talk to everybody there, you know, no, man. You can know me on a personal level.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, I'll be there. We got it all on the, on the calendar. So looking forward to it. Looking forward to it. Well, Dan, I appreciate it. Thank you again. And just so you know, uh, doors always welcome. Anytime you want to come in, you know, you're always welcomed here and, you know, looking forward to, you know, helping you out in any way we can. And, uh, I'm, I'm glad you're, you're doing it. You've got the courage to do it.
Well, thank you, man. People like you is why I'm doing it for.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. Thanks. All right, all right. 239, that's censored everything Southwest Florida and beyond. And we always go, we are out. So 239, that's censored everything Southwest Florida and beyond, and we are out. All right.